King and welcome to the July 14th, 2022 work session in public hearing of the Penfield Planning Board. Lori, would you please call the roll?
Hetske.
Hetske here.
Aiken.
Aiken here.
Burton.
Burton here.
Canower.
Canower here.
Tidings.
Tidings here.
Sangster.
Sangster here.
Wyser.
Wyser here.
O'Connor.
O'Connor here.
Dubrek.
Dubrek here.
Gray here.
Okay, just for the folks that are here with us, welcome. And we begin our meetings typically from 6:30 to 7 with a work session where we cover tabled items that are on our agenda. And if we get through those prior to 7 o'clock, we'll begin the public hearing immediately following that. And if not, if we don't get through all of our tabled items, we'll begin the meeting at the public hearing portion at 7 o'clock anyway. So we have minutes from the June 23 meeting. Hopefully, everybody's having opportunity to review them. And can we entertain a motion to approve?
I'll do that. Motion to approve.
Tidings, second motion.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, Doug, would you like to start going through our tabled items' agenda?
Yep, so tabled application one is the pathstone development. We have been in some discussions with the applicant. They're looking to submit revised and reconfigured site layout here soon, but they requested that they be tabled tonight.
Okay, I'll move to table.
I'll second.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, second tabled application is the Arbers at Penfield. So at your last meeting, the boards completed the seeker process and approved a negative declaration on the project.
Not Arbers.
But for Arbers, I'm sorry, I stand corrected.
We gotta do the neg.
So we revised the neg deck based on some comments or responses we had received from the board. So we provided that for the board for your consideration, that along with the completed Part II and III of the long form EAF.
Okay, so we have that. It's a fairly lengthy document. Hopefully, everybody's had an opportunity to take a look at that.
I'm satisfied. Any other questions in the board? Staff satisfied?
Yeah, I'm good with this. It's been a fairly lengthy process to get this to this point, so I think we're finally there.
Okay, with that, I'll move to approve the negative declaration on this project.
I'll second.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Likewise, we have revised and completed a draft approval resolution for the board's consideration as well.
Yes, so that, we have all of the factors for consideration for mixed-use development, and we've added justifications and meeting the Table 6.1 requirements and all those.
Yes, so the approval resolution goes through the findings for subdivision approval, site plan approval, the 10 principles for mixed-use, which is sort of the factors for the mixed-use as outlined in 5.12 of the code, as well as for added clarification, we went through and did sort of a finding sheet for Table 6.1, which outlines the district summary requirements for the Zone A and B and C for the project.
Bob, do you have any comments, concerns?
No, I reviewed the final this afternoon, and I think it looks good.
Terry?
I'm okay with it.
Jim?
Kelly?
Okay, the only thing I guess I would say is that with something like this, we just want to make sure that in our resolution that we allow for citations to be checked and just basically minor details to be worked out, but the meat of it's in here. So if you want to go ahead and...
Sure. Yeah, with that, I'll move to approve this draft resolution.
I'll second.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, Penfield Heights.
Application number three, Penfield Heights. This one, we did complete seeker at the last meeting. The board approved a negative declaration for the project. Since the last meeting, the board has worked on completing a draft approval resolution for this application as well, and it was provided for your review.
Yeah, same holds true with this one?
Yes, in terms of subject to final tweaking and double-checking by Mr. Wyser and town staff.
I've looked at both of these, and the only thing that would need to be just verified by staff really is make sure that they're citing the right plans and things, that, you know, subject to kind of final check before stamping it in.
Which I'm pretty sure that Doug and Mike have been doing for the past two or three weeks anyhow, so...
Yep, we'll go through that. We'll do that. We'll do a grammar check again and make sure I haven't misspelled anything.
So before I move this to a vote, I'd just like to say for the record that with both of these mixed-use development applications, I'd like to applaud the applicants and their design teams for basically reconfiguring their projects to conform to a challenging set of regulations. And, you know, we recognize and appreciate the amount of time and effort that it's taken to get to this point. And with that, I will move to approve this application.
Second?
I'll second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
All right, next up.
All right, application number four, 1838 Penfield Road is the Verizon cell tower. So there's been some ongoing discussion with the applicant since the last meeting regarding the RF analysis. So at this time, so at this time, you know, we're still awaiting some information from Verizon on that. We did receive a response to the board's consultant, visual impact consultant Bergman, from Verizon, as well as responses to that review on yesterday. So staff is still going through it and still reviewing it. We're still looking at, there's sort of a couple of questions that staff has, and I believe that the board, you know, based on recommendations from Bergman, to get on the record, one would be regarding the visual impact, the scope, and their documentation of Verizon submitted, I believe it was a mile and a half. You know, putting it on the record that the tower would not be visible at a distance greater than a mile and a half.
And I think also a mile was stated on there, if I'm not mistaken. So I'd like to know if they could get back to us on that, that I think there was something stated that it won't be viewable.
Yeah, so I think the, yes. So I believe their letter of intent stated a mile and a half, and I believe the Viewshed map itself was at a mile.
Right, so yeah, we're going to be tabling this, but in the tabling resolution, I'd like to have that clarified. You good with that, Bob?
I would have to go back and, you know, certainly, there's some structures that do have historic significance that are even within that one-mile radius. And I think I would still like to see, and it may still be coming, is what alternatives are there for a masking-type structure for what they're proposing?
Okay.
So I think that was part of what we had asked for before.
And in the response packet we did receive, Verizon, I believe, has TerraCon as a consultant who is doing sort of the historic and SHIPA work. So we did receive information as part of TerraCon's review. I've had a time to go do a detailed review of it at this time, but that is something I'm looking to get through and provide the board some more information on.
Okay.
And the, I know there was some discussion on the shot clock, but we don't really need to act on that tonight.
I believe our shot clock is through August 12th, which would put us through our next meeting on August 11th.
That would take us to our next...
So John, are you here online?
I am. Can you hear me?
Yes. Should we be asking for that shot clock extension tonight, or can we do that in August? What would you prefer?
Either way, either way is acceptable, and I don't know, is anyone from the applicant present?
Yes, Jared's here.
Jared's here.
We would probably, just so that we don't have to deal with the matter in August, I don't think we're going to be done based...
Do it now?
Yeah, we think it, do it now, let's...
Great, let's do that now.
Makes sense for us, and then we don't have to do it. If I could just be heard on the two issues, I know we responded to the stealth, the tower design issue in our previous submissions. So I think that question's been asked. We gave you different colors and designs and indicated to you that a tree's probably not appropriate.
Right.
You know, again, we're confined by ground space in terms of what we can do. And so from a monopole perspective, there's only so many different ways, and we said color is probably the best way, and we're open to whatever you'd like to do. With that, understanding that Viewshed, I do think we've responded, there was one open item on the Bergman letter, wanted to know the area of potential effect and what was sent to SHIPA. We provided that. So from our perspective, I believe we've responded to all of the Bergman comments. From our perspective, obviously, we've gone through that process, and we're looking to get some sense what other, I mean, obviously, the shot clock, we're extending it because we need to deal with it, but from our, we'd like to get a final list of issues, because obviously Bergman's looked at it. It seems like we've answered their questions and given them the information, and they've signed off on all the issues in that list, except for the one that we've responded to yesterday. And that was, again, a submission of information that had been provided to SHIPA. So we're trying to sort of get some sense from you, knowing that we have to go deal with the RF issues at the ZBA, but we'd like to sort of tie off on any outstanding issues and like to know what they are so that we can deal with them when we're dealing with ZBA, rather than sort of playing to multiple masters if you understand what we're saying.
So we have a little bit of a timing issue here, because we have a requirement that the information is presented to the board on the Friday prior to the next scheduled hearing. So you may have responded to some things, but until the town staff has an opportunity to sort those out and provide that information to the board, it's not really something that we can give you guidance on, that you can proceed on that basis.
I appreciate that, and there was an issue we got at the 7th, and I turned it around as soon as I can from getting the, people had vacations, and again, we, so I'm not particularly worried. I know we, from our perspective, I think it was a simple request that we answered, but I've heard the one and a half, one-mile issue. I think we'll confirm that, but is there anything else that we can be working on between now and the next month? I know we've answered the stealth design options previously.
Yeah, so it sounds like...
Are the stealth design options' response satisfactory?
Well, I can...
Is it exhausted enough?
I can understand, because you have a defined footprint for that structure, which really limits the base size by using a monopole. So it sounds like other structures, like, you know, just to throw out a clock tower or something like that would require a much more substantial footprint to accomplish that. And it almost sounds like the, right now, the only alternative, it would still be the monopole structure with the antenna array with some sort of, call it like a camouflage painting to kind of camouflage it in the sky. And I know through previous applicants, it's kind of a hit and miss, because, of course, the sky is changing, so you pick one color, but on certain days, it's going to stand out more than other days, whether it's battleship gray or blue.
The most likely thing here would be clouds.
Yeah, right, right.
Unfortunately.
So I guess in that respect, you know, there's just, there's physical limitations with the site.
Again, that was our position, and we've gone back to the district on multiple occasions in an effort to try to get more space, et cetera, and they've been accommodating in some with regard to the landscaping and things, but a different location on the property or larger compound is not something that they have been supportive of despite our multiple attempts to do that for operational, I think there are operational concerns for the fire district. So again, we're happy to discuss and get the information. We just want to make, see if we can get from staff some of the final questions that we need to answer, so that we can tie off that. And respectfully, I understand you haven't had a chance to look at it. It's not qualitative, I don't believe qualitative information. It was what was submitted. We provided that. It was about 78 pages worth of PDF that I sent to Mr. Sangster, and I didn't give it to the rest of you, but again, it's stuff that the SHIPA consultants submitted. So from that perspective, if you want to extend this to the shot clock until the ZBA's August meeting, to allow, because I think you follow, they will follow you, and we actually, we better do it to the following, the September Planning Board meeting, because we'll...
Correct.
In a perfect world.
September 9th.
September 9th.
September 9th, yeah, our September meeting's on the 8th.
And we're fine with that, to deal with that.
Okay, all right.
So you think that's the appropriate date?
We need two separate...
Yeah.
Yeah, I'll have to do a shot clock vote, and then I'll do a tabling resolution.
Okay.
Yeah.
So do you want to move to request resetting the shot clock to September 9th?
Yeah, so I will do that to make a motion that we reset that shot clock to September 9th.
Request.
Yeah.
Request, do I say it?
Yeah, tidings, second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
And motion to continue tabling this application?
Tidings, second motion.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay.
And so just for the record, just confirming that Viewshed remains, and again, any comment that you might have on what we submitted is what you're looking for. I just want to understand what's outstanding.
Yes.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thanks.
Have a great night, folks.
You too. Okay, moving on. See if we can take care of this in nine minutes.
All right, I'll do my best. So tabled application number five is Chick-fil-A. Since we last met, we received revised plans. The biggest changes you'll notice on the revised plans is that there's been a reduction in parking. That large parking field on the east side of the property is no longer there. Along with that, the improvements to the rear access drive, they're continuing the sidewalk to provide pedestrian access to the front of the restaurant, but they've reduced the parking down to essentially what is required for the operation of the store.
And what was going to be an improved access drive is no longer on the table for that. So that's something that's, to me, kind of a deal breaker.
Correct, so...
I will say that out loud.
On this site plan, as they've proposed it, they would, the limits of the mill and overlay would be off of 250, just east of their parking lot, and I believe on the north side, just south of their access to the parking lot on the, yes, that'd be on the north side.
So, Mr. Chairman, I could chime in.
Hang on one sec, we'll...
Sure.
Go ahead.
We got a little bit of limited time here, so just want to point out a couple of things. Recognize that you heard the board's concerns about parking and the elimination of the 11 spaces, much appreciated, but we still have this odd grouping of proposed parking spaces that do not appear to be associated with any building. And I can't speak for the whole board, but I would not be supportive of a parking lot just for the sake of a parking lot that's not associated with a building. We don't know what the purpose is, or, you know, whether there's some other uses that, you know, the developer has. So we're going to need some real good clarification on there, or, you know, maybe you consider calling that land-banked future parking, like Mr. O'Connor mentioned in his PRC comments several weeks ago, and we can just deal with that that way. Also, like to note that you note on the zoning analysis table on Lot 6.998 that there are zero parking spaces, but in fact, there are 34 here. So what's on this plan and what's on your written response to the tabling motion and the PRC comments is not fully aligned. So also, just for the record, note that we have not yet received your responses to our architectural consultants' comments. So something that we'll be looking for, so do you have something you'd like to say this evening?
Sure, I'll be brief. Tim Fryte with Bowler Engineering here on behalf of the applicant. So Doug did relay the message of we should go take a look at the condition of the existing access drive. So we got here early today to go analyze that, and yes, it's in need of repair and resurfacing. So the applicant is going to repair that road and resurface the entire stretch out to the main road into our site. So we'll take care of that and update that on the new plans. The parking field, ideally, that's going to be team member parking to park over in the back of the site and not interfere with the customer parking out in the central parking field.
How many team members are typically on-site at any given time?
Yeah, so a typical shift is 10 parking or 10 team members, and then you have overlapping shifts that we're also discussing with the code enforcement team to nail that down. So during lunch, you could have an overlap of two shifts, right? So 10 and 10, so potentially 20 at one time when you're changing lunch hour, or both shifts are on during lunch hour. So that would be about 20 team member spaces up in that area, and then there's an additional, I think that area has 34 spaces, so you got to flex 14 additional spaces there for overflow if it's ever needed during a peak timeframe. So we can put some of that in writing to clarify what we're looking at over in that area. Maybe we'll go back to the applicant and the landowner to see if we can bank any of those, if they're really necessary, so we can provide a detailed explanation on that.
So what you're saying is the 34 spaces are really needed for team members, and they're overlapping shifts? And the, how many, remind me, how many spaces again are in the main parking lot?
So there's 81 in the main parking lot.
81, and how many tables and chairs are in the restaurant?
You're saying 74.
Plus the outdoor dining to leave its 94 spaces roughly, or 94 seats, including the outdoor dining.
Okay. So I think we may have asked this before, but you ever actually get full occupancy inside the restaurant? Or is, in fact, a good percentage of the business, the drive-through?
Yeah, no, I have personally been in some dining rooms that you can't find a seat at.
Restaurants this big?
Yeah, so across the New York State rollout, these dining rooms are similar in size, and this actually has a little less seats than some other locations, but they're generally full. So in addition to seating, you also have guests in line to order at the counter, so you can add some additional spaces for anybody standing in line. And then they also have takeout. So there's a separate channel inside the building that somebody can park, but pre-ordered via phone or on the app. So they're going to park, go and pick up their meal and leave. So inside has, you know, people sitting down, people standing in line, and also people going into the store picking up the food that was pre-ordered. And then the last comment there, just on the architectural comments, so those came in late. We got those after our recent mission was already made. We've been in touch with the architect. They're looking at options in general. The response of the architectural comments was it's in general harmony with the design guidelines. There were a couple of recommendations that we're looking into. The biggest one was just doing something with the entry door to make that stand out a little bit more from the east facade.
Relocate the sign, yep.
That we can shift the sign a little bit, maybe we can extend the parapet up a little bit higher, or do some type of massing to identify that as more of a focal entrance point. So they're looking into that right now.
And the glass, the clear glass.
And it will all be clear glass, not tinted.
So just want to note while I'm looking at this here, with your written justification on this ancillary parking over here, because that's a separate parking lot, you're required to have accessible parking over there as well. That's it, yeah, that's...
Okay, we'll certainly look into that, and even if there's not a business, we'll look into the ADA code and provide justification either way.
Okay.
Okay, anything else before we move on?
I don't think so. I think we can get in just under the wire here.
I'll make a motion to continue tabling this application pending receipt of additional information.
I'll second.
Hetske.
Hetske, aye.
Aiken.
Aiken, aye.
Burton.
Burton, aye.
Canower.
Canower, aye.
Tidings.
Tidings, aye.
Okay, great, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, at this point, we will begin the public hearing portion of the meeting. Is it 7 o'clock yet? It is, right on the dot.
I've got 7 o'clock.
And we'll begin with the pledge of allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our...
Okay, once again, thank everyone for coming. The, if you have not been to one of our meetings before, or if you're unfamiliar with our process, the Planning Board is responsible for site plan and subdivision review and approval. And we have three items on our agenda tonight. One is what's called a sketch plan, which is an informal discussion. It's not an official application or plan. It's, somebody has a concept in their mind, they put some limited resources toward making, putting that idea on paper, and they come before the board to get some feedback and feedback from the public. And then we have two applications that are in for preliminary and final. They're actual applications that are requesting approval to move forward. The, we will invite the applicants up, and they can sit at this table to... The, we will invite the applicants up, and they can sit at this table to present your project to the board. Once you're done with that, the board will ask questions. Once we're complete asking the questions on the board, we'll open it up to the audience. And if you're watching from home or anywhere around the world, because we're streaming all over the planet, and we have millions of viewers. And so you can call in, you can send in electronic submissions. If you call, you can call 585-340-8771. And the command center in the basement will put you in the queue to speak your mind. If you are online, you can go to www.penfield.org and submit something electronically that way. So with that, I think I've covered everything. If you want to speak and I call you up, please speak to the board. Address your comments to the board, not to the applicants. And there are also Lorie's over there gathering some slips of paper. If you'd like to sign up to speak, you can do that and hand her a sheet of paper, and I will call you up. If you don't feel like doing that and you want to raise your hand, that is totally fine too. So Doug, with that, if you could read our first sketch plan.
All right.
Project.
Application number one, Lakeside Engineering PC, 11 Center Park, Suite 305, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Rabia Anilafar Zugehi, did I get that correct? Request an informal discussion before the board with plans for a three-lot subdivision on 2.48 acres located at 2305 Penfield Road. The property is now formally owned by Rabia Anilafar Zugehi and zoned residential R120. Application number 22P-0017, SBL number 140.01-1-75.2.
Okay. I'm Rod Pryser. I'm the owner of Lakeside Engineering, representing Rob Anilafar Zugehi. Pretty close, I think. For the three-lot subdivision at 2305 Penfield Road. Two of the lots being intended to be developed initially. And then the third lot is being put aside for later development, possibly into two additional lots. The initial lots will be accessed by an existing curb cut on Penfield Road. That curb cut is 16 feet wide. That will deliver the automobiles to the front lot directly. And then the rear lot through a 10-foot-wide driveway that will expand again to approximately 16-foot at the garage. The front lot is going to be a 20,000 square foot or greater as per code. Property and the rear parcel and any other additional parcels that there might be in the future, 25,000 square feet. Believe we are in conformance with setbacks, with the exception, and one of the comments was that the rear lot should have, I believe, 50-foot was the comment from the rear lot of the front lot.
The front setback.
Yeah, if that's the case, we can accommodate that. Other than that, we should meet all the requirements for subdivision approval for this zoning situation. We are proposing public utilities to serve both the residents and potentially the future two lots in the back as well. The sanitary sewer is on the same side of the road as we're on. That'll be a pretty easy one. The water main is on the opposite side of the road, so the intention is to drive up to two-inch diameter copper water services, meeting all the requirements of the Monroe County Water Authority, of course, to service those two pieces. The second lot is going to have some easements running to it for the driveway, of course, for their water service and for the sanitary sewer lateral. The front lot will be fed directly out the road, won't need any easements. The drainage and the grading, basically at this time, the plan is to take the water as it flows now to the rear of the lot. And we understand there are some drainage problems at the rear of the lot, all too well, much of which we believe was caused by the state facility that went in right next door. They discharged through a pretty large diameter eight-inch pipe their stormwater directly into the middle of our property. If, when we do develop the rear property, something will have to be done to accommodate that. And at this point in time, because it's such a low spot, everything goes uphill from that location. The only way we feel that that can be taken care of is going to be a drainage pump station. And of course, there's a pretty sizable cost that will go with that. That being the case, is why we'd like to defer that work until we do the second phase of the project, of course. Environmentally, it doesn't show, this is just a sketch plan, and I apologize somewhat, it's a little confusing, we've got so much on it. The final plans will, of course, include the subdivision map. There'll be separate drawings for utilities and separate drawings for drainage and erosion management, which will include the usual silt fences and any other requirements or needs based on what the project requirements are. I do have the comments from the town and the county, and I could run through them briefly if I may. The first from the town, Mr. O'Connor. Modification in NYDOT right away will require a permit. At this point, it's our belief that we can do the work with a single permit for utility construction for the water services crossing the road to the two parcels. There was some question about whether or not water service alone would be adequate, and perhaps a hydrant might be in order. We feel that there's adequate service in the area. I don't know exactly how far the hydrant is, but this is a well-served area. If such service were required, it should have been done when the state came through with their major facility right next door. But that will be looked into further, as far as whether or not that's got to be done or as an alternative, we could put sprinklers in the home. Because the cost of that, as with the pump station in the rear of the project, would be very sizable. Okay, the third comment from Mr. O'Connor was, as I discussed already, to push the second home back approximately 50 feet. Exactly, or 50 feet or more. That's fine. Another comment was that the rear setback for the front home might be increased beyond the 30 feet. I believe that is the minimum that we're showing. Correct me if I'm wrong, but that's what I found in the zoning requirements. We'll still look at that to see if maybe a slightly larger rear yard would make more sense, however. We'll follow any tree policy requirements of the town of Penfield, of course, being the two trees per lot. Existing vegetation on the property, there really is very little. What we've got is the trees on the, that were planted by the state on the adjacent parcel where their facilities located. We'll take another look at that if there's any other trees or otherwise, we'll put them on there. Some pump discharge does have to go on the final plans. It will do so. Lot number one is going to allow lot number two to have a driveway into it. The easement is not currently shown. It will be expanded to provide for that driveway and possibly any utility services. Site data sheet will be added to the final drawings. Drainage, we've already touched on. County Health Department will now have to review it as a realty subdivision, but they do say if there's proposed water and sewer facilities, which they are, then they do have to review it. We, of course, are going to provide it to them. The Watson Road drainage was discussed by the County Department of Transportation, saying that because it's 30 feet width total, only a 10-foot-wide road can be put in, and that they need, I guess, 10 feet on each side of the road to the property lanes. We can live with that if we do go in that direction with the next phase. It's all kind of effy at this point. We'll know better when we get this all said and done. Currently, the plan is for a couple sizable homes, at least 2,000 square foot in the area. The geodetic survey requirements will be met in the final subdivision layout. We have Greg Meyer, who's a very well-respected licensed surveyor, who would be doing the final survey, plotting and meeting of any mine limitation requirements and so forth if necessary. And of course, the work will also go to the Division of Pure Water, Department of Environmental Services, for review of the sewer lateral requirements. Again, so the final plans will be probably at least four sheets, the three I mentioned, at least one detail and profile sheet. That's the project in the nutshell.
Okay. I have a couple of questions. Would you consider potentially reconsider reconfiguring those front two lots to allow the driveway to not be 100% on Lot 1?
Yeah, we could do that. We can reconfigure it. We can put it right up against, right within probably, I failed to mention, that's a flag lot on the second piece, and that's going to be served by a 15-foot-wide flag. And there's no reason that we can't put the driveway in that area. Sure, I don't see any issue with that.
And it does seem that Lot 1 has a very small rear yard. And then you said that they're interested in potentially two additional lots on the rear portion of the property. I assume those would be accessed on via Watson Road?
Yeah, that would be the intent. You know, if we, if, when we develop that rear property into two different additional residential sites.
And you also mentioned that the site did not have drainage issues until the state put their.
No, it had drainage issues, but exacerbated tremendously by that eight-inch pipe that dumps right into the center of the property. You know, there's no way around a drainage issue when you've got an area that's low and everything around it is higher and runs off into it. And you've got fairly shallow rock, and everything is uphill from that location. That's why I said, it's been suggested that maybe some sort of a pond with underdrains or whatever might be a possibility, but it's not because the underdrains would have to daylight, and there's nowhere for them to daylight too without a pump allowing that to happen. We've been trying to send water uphill against gravity as an engineer for years and years. Hasn't happened yet.
Right. Okay. Other questions from the board?
So first, I have a question from Mike.
Who?
How? How does the engineering department feel about a lift station for conveying stormwater? And where would that potentially go? I mean, is that something that's conceivably approvable?
I've never come across that. I mean, it would probably be privately owned. The town will not take take-ation of that. It's a challenge.
Okay, so my next question for you, Rod, is you've got to put in a lift station, and then some kind of a stormwater structure to take that conveyance.
Yes.
And then with the distances that you're showing here, you will likely need a private fire hydrant. So.
I'm not sure why.
Well, you have to see how the fire code treats that distance. But, so my question is, if you're going to do all that, have you considered just making this a two-lot subdivision?
It may happen. You know, the cost of this pump station and the durability of it will dictate whether or not we can go forward, and the cost will be substantial.
Disproportionate to the cost of a single-family home?
No, we would put it in a submersible location, as we usually do with sewer pump standards, sewer pump stations. It wouldn't have to be designed for the full and maximum runoff to the area, because we would probably have a small pond that it would sit in, that the level would be, it would be a design challenge. Can only go to Watson Road, as I see it, because there's really no storm sewer unfortunately available for this lot on Penfield Road, and that's several hundred feet. And we'd have to get the county's permission to go into their stormwater sewer system, which I haven't even broached with them on Watson Road. So there's a few hurdles, but there are stormwater pump stations in existence. I don't know exactly quite like this, but it would be manageable. It would be a station that would be probably under the control of the rear parcel unless some sort of an association. We don't know. It's, right now, we're concentrating on what's up front and trying to get that taken care of. And just saying, we believe there is a solution to the problem in the back, but this project is so miniscule in the amount of additional flow, it's going to add in conjunction in relationship to the amount that goes into this site now. You know, there's almost an intrinsic right, in my opinion, for this to be approved with the drainage as shown.
Okay.
Any other comments from the board?
How big are the houses, did you say?
2,200 square feet or there are more, there are abouts.
And then.
They'll be good, nice houses.
Yeah, and so they're sharing, from what I'm looking at, they're sharing one entry?
They share on the one axis, the 16-foot-wide axis. We like to, of course, do it without any increase in that width according to the state. Well, they had no comments on whether there would have to be, and that's certainly wide enough, I think, for two cars passing. And in fact, that's the main maximum width we're expecting to see at the entrance to the driveway garage, so that would be satisfactory. And not to be used, though, for the rear parcels, because we're kind of landlocking them to have to come out on Watson Road with this design. Not landlocking them, but we require, that would be the necessity of it at that time.
The intentions for these homes or for you folks are both homes?
Yes.
Right now?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions?
What's the approximate distance from, call it that back corner lot three out to Watson?
You're talking the southeast corner?
600 feet.
600 feet, okay. And then the, I can't read this, from the, on these front lots, okay, 600 feet. Thank you.
Which is far, not as far as it would be to go all the way out to Penfield Road. That would be even more than.
So the utilities for Lot 3, if it was built, would they, it sounds like there'd be an easement and they'd come in from Penfield Road?
The utilities would come in from Watson Road.
From Watson Road, okay.
Everything would be served from Watson Road.
For that Lot 3, okay.
For those two, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Okay. Any other questions? Comments? Okay, I'd like to open this up for questions from the audience. We'll start. Please forgive me if I butcher the pronunciation of your name, but Ken Wanamaker, if you could come up and sit next to Mike, probably won't bite, and I heard that he showered this morning, so go ahead, sit there. And if we could get your name and address for the record, love to hear your comments.
My name's Ken Wanamaker. I live at 5 Hunters Drive North. It doesn't actually touch lot lines with the proposed property, but my main concerns are with the drainage. The, the current situation as it is now is not ideal, so I just ask that there be a plan in place to, to address it.
To deal with it.
I did want to point out, too, that I have noticed since the site's been cleared, it seems that the drainage has worsened. So I think compacted soil and loss of vegetation on the lot has exacerbated the issue. Looking at the proposal as it stands now, I have, I have some concerns with a wait-and-see approach with the back, that back section of the lot. I'd like to see that there'd be an approved plan for site lots in place before any work was completed. I took some notes here. I did want to point out, too, the question of a pump station. I have some concerns on whether or not that would be maintained by the town, or if it would be a private pump station that falls on the homeowner, which could be an issue in the future with maintenance.
Yeah. Yeah. More than likely, it would be a homeowner, privately owned thing, potentially spread out over the, however many properties there were.
And the other concern I had is, my understanding was that the proposal was for three lots, and I overheard that there's potential for the initial two, and then an additional two in the back. So I wanted clarification on if it was three total or four total.
Mm-hmm.
That's all I have.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, Robert Hall.
Oops. Hello, you got the name right.
Hello, great. Yours was pretty straightforward, thankfully.
I'm on 8 Fox Hill Drive, and I bump up to the lot back there. And our lots are already quite wet during the rainy season, so I'm worried about if they raise their property, that wet stuff is just going to come back and roll back into our house.
So you're next to the Swangers?
Yep.
Okay.
Yes. So...
I live on Silver Fox, so...
Okay.
I'm in, in the neighborhood.
So I'm kind of a new neighbor, but...
Well, welcome.
Thanks.
I've lived there for 29...
For a year and a half I've been there. You know, spring and the fall gets really wet back there.
Okay.
And they, they have a standing pond back there. Most of the time, it's dried up the last couple of weeks, but the water is the big issue back there.
Okay.
So...
That's it. Thank you. Thank you for your comments. All right, would anybody else like to speak to this sir in the front? Come on up. Yes, please. If you could state your name and address for the record.
Good evening. My name's Dale Marino, and I live at 19 Hunters Drive North. We're on the cul-de-sac, so our property doesn't border the new proposal. We're one property removed. And I want to reiterate what you've already heard. We have a very significant water problem back there. Drainage is very bad, and I believe it has gotten worse since that new property was put in by the state. Years ago, it was uncleared, and there were trees and whatever, but it seems to have gotten worse. So I just wanted to bring that up again. I'm very concerned if they go with the idea of a pumping station. Could be something in the future, but we don't know if those plans are going to come to fruition. So I am concerned really about the water problem, the drainage.
Okay.
The second thing that hasn't come up, and we noticed this, my wife and I driving over, I'm not sure where the curb cutout is into these properties, but Penfield Road narrows down to, from two lanes down to one lane. And I don't know where that cutoff is. So you may have people trying to move left and move right within a short proximity. So it's one other thing maybe to take a look at.
Mm-hmm. Good point.
That's about all I had to say. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. Okay, sir, you... Hi.
My name is Robert Wells. I live at 15 Hunters Drive North, and one of the original owners, we built our house there. And when we first built our house there, we were told that was going to be a forever wild. And then around 18 years later, or 20 years later, the state of New York took it upon themselves just to put a group home in there without any approval. So we just say the state is pretty, you know, they, they can do what they want to do. So this is...
They do, the post office does, the school district does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And they have, they've done nothing, I mean, it's, it looks awful over there now. They have retention ponds themselves to take care of the water issue. We've never really had as much water in our backyard as we've had this year. And I think that has some reflection on the amount of wild trees and bushes that have been removed. I'm not really, I'm really concerned about that, because we've had this, the town over to try to give us some suggestions, and they've told us we could put a French drain in and attach to the front culvert. This would be really expensive. All this is in the background of what they're trying to do and get this approval. But what I hear is basically that there is not a firm commitment from the builder here to either, it's, we're going to fix things as things go along. I don't believe in that. I think you have to have a firm plan to stand up with. I mean, we're going to put either two houses or three houses, and this is how we're going to take care of getting rid of the water. I think you have to have very firm plans with anything that gets developed in there. Then if you add additional traffic in those houses and people trying to get in, in from Penfield Road, and you have traffic at 4:00 to 6:00, doing 65 miles an hour plus in that area, which is 45, I think it's just asking for another accident to happen, because you've got all this traffic just speeding up, as they just have to slow down. I can't imagine what it's going to be like for refuse picked up by, you know, whoever it might be, Lilo or whatever, where they're going to park. And now they're going to be parked out front on Penfield Road or Watson Road. They're going to have to go that long distance to bring all their trash buckets, either for the truck to back in, like they do on Steve FedEx area, they have to back up. I don't see that happening. I mean, these are little small things, but I think the biggest issue is we don't have, there is not a firm plan here. I think you have a firm plan to, how are we going to recompensate the water?
Part of that is, this is a sketch plan.
Yeah.
So the...
Right.
One of the main ideas of this meeting is to gather information, and then they make decisions based on feedback from neighbors, the public, the town, and...
I just get the impression there's, this is, we're going to wait and see, we're going to figure it out as we go along. I don't think that, I think there's enough diciness going on with that property in the back that you can't have like an if-come plan. You have to have a firm plan up front, and you have to have a firm plan up front of how you're going to get rid of the water. When we first moved in there, we, there was a small pond. There was also a culvert over, near, closer to Fox Hill. And I think for one reason or another, that thing got destroyed or moved around, and then we started to get a little bit of water. But once the town brought in at least six or seven feet of dirt filled, it got much worse. And their retention ponds didn't really do much to stop that. So I guess the bottom line here is, try to think about a plan that works for everybody, including the, we would welcome those new homes. I would help the tax base. But I think you have to have a firm plan of how to get rid of this water first. Once you have that firm plan that everybody can agree on, then have a firm plan of how many houses you're going to build. I don't believe you build one and speculate on the other two. I think you need a firm plan, like any builder in the area would. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, sir, come on up.
Hi, I'm Carl Teal King, 9 Hunters Drive North. Our property does, about to, this property that we're reviewing, the, I share all of the concerns I've heard. The water issue in, in, in my case, in our case, especially the houses right around that corner at the bottom of the lot, have always had a significant water issue. It became, from my perspective, it was actually, I believe it was two owners ago, who had, a number of years ago, bulldozed the, the lot to level, level it out into, my understanding was, for the purpose of trying to make it, you know, more valuable for selling or developing perhaps itself. The problem is that it did actually fill a, what was, I don't know if it was an intentional or just happened to be their pond, but there was a pond there. When we originally moved in, back in the 90s, the, the geese would nest in there. And in those days also, there was a significant amount of shrubbery and trees that I think also helped with the water issue to, to a high degree. As soon as that bulldozing was done, what we experienced and have experienced at an even greater level since the state did their, what they did, is essentially an inability to mow the lower third of our lawn for at least two, three months beyond the beginning of, or the end of winter and into that mowing season. That varies from year to year. This year's been a drier year, so it hasn't been quite as long, but it was still substantial amount of time before it would be possible to even mow the lawn back there. So it is a very significant issue. I have concerns about a privately owned pump station to address the water. I have no idea where, you know, how that would work. And, and that means we're depending on, essentially in perpetuity, we're depending on whoever owns the property in the future to maintain that. And what happens if it breaks down? And how quickly is it going to be resolved? And things of those sorts. Another thing that has not been mentioned that I have a concern about is the, what I heard stated was that, that there were no, currently no trees, other trees on the lot. It is true that, that the current owner had removed all of the trees in the, in the main body of the lot, but there is still a barrier of trees along the outside of the lot toward Hunters Drive North, and...
Saying on the east side of the lot?
The east side of the lot. My concern would be to, would be a desire to see those trees remain and, and be managed in some way. But, but it sounded as if there was a belief that they would be removing all the trees from, from the property that they own. Those are my main concerns. I, I agree with what Scott said, also regarding, a half-baked plan has, in, in my mind, the potential to leave a very significant problem, not only for us, but for the new owner. We're going to have that flooding. It just, it extends out, it's a shallow, basically a shallow pond. I like to call it Lake Penfield. But in any case, it's, it's large. It's expansive. And the geese do come in, still in there now, but it's not confined the way it used to be back a couple of decades ago. So we would ask, my wife and I would ask that, that the water issue be maintained as a number-one priority in this project.
Thank you. Yes, come on up. Hello.
My name is, my name is Deb Wilson. I live at 4 Fox Hill Drive, so the second property in, off of Watson. I agree with everything that's been said. We're not affected by the water issue at, at the moment, I should say. My concern is the strip of property that goes out to Watson, because that is where our property is bordered. To echo the tree issue, for us, it is a, it is a privacy issue. The trees are, for the most part, on the property that's being talked about tonight, but there are some that are on the property line. So I'm concerned about what would happen with those trees. Also, something that I think was a little bit touched on, but not completely, I'm concerned about the traffic out on Watson. When the state put in their property, that long driveway that's there was designated to be only an exit for that property. It's not always only an exit. Sometimes people do enter that way, which is a problem. But my understanding was, at the time that they put that in, that they did not want an entrance there and an exit. So if this plan, which is obviously not complete, landlocks the two front properties, then the only entry and exit would be the long driveway out to Watson. So that tells me there's going to be traffic going both ways, which in my mind is a road. And that's difficult for us. We moved in 17 years ago. We, too, were told that that was forever wild because it could not be developed because of the drainage issue. So, you know, I'm, I'm very disappointed to learn that there could be a driveway put in there and trees taken down. It significantly affects our privacy, but it's their property. But my concern on Watson is that there's, it's a very busy intersection at Watson and 441. There's already a good deal of accidents there. If people are coming, going east on 441 and turning onto Watson, as soon as they get around the corner, it's a speedway. When we're trying to turn into Fox Hill, I'm putting my brake lights on when I first come around the corner of 441, just to slow people down. And I'm pumping my brakes. If they're going to have an entrance there to that driveway, which is another, I don't know how many feet, closer to 441, it's, it's another opportunity for accidents. And I think that that's an issue for all of us that live in the area. I drive that way all the time. I'm sure all my neighbors drive that way all the time. I come home that way. We don't want to hear sirens any more than we do already, which is pretty much every day, three or four times a day. So I'm very concerned about entry, exit, and for my neighbors, I'm concerned about the drainage.
Okay.
Because I know that's been an issue. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Yes, sir, come on up.
Hello. My name is Jason Jabor. I moved into 17 Hunters Drive North two weeks ago. And, you know, we heard about the development happening on this property. We weren't exactly sure. We heard it was zoned for residential. We weren't exactly sure what was going in. You know, I'm kind of just reiterating what everybody else is going to say. We moved from South Carolina. We lived there for about eight years. We lived in a new development where we were kind of at the mercy of the builders at that point in time. You know, builders say one thing, and then they do something else. You know, builders say one thing and then they do something else. And I'm not saying, I could very well be comparing apples to oranges. Right.
You moved from South Carolina to New York?
I moved, I grew up in this area. I grew up in, yeah. I moved back home.
You're a unicorn.
It's, you know, it wasn't for us, let's put it that way. My concern is definitely, especially since everybody's brought it up, and it was before I heard everybody bring it up, was the drainage. We've yet to see what could happen, and I'm looking at the map. I mean, our property line cover, you know, is adjacent to very much, yes, that property. And when we were looking at the house, our realtor walked in the backyard and even over Zoom, we could see that the property was full of water. So my, my issue is, you know, again, if a builder is kind of saying, you know, well, we'll wait and see, to me, in my past experience, that means that it's probably going to be put in haphazardly. Again, I could be completely wrong. I don't know this person. Or what they're, you know, but in my experience, it's put in, and if it's something that's maintained by, you know, property owners, you're kind of at the mercy of those property owners. Some property owners are amazing, some not so much. So again, if it does break, what happens? If my yard is full and I, you know, I'm swimming in my basement, who am I going to call to, do I call the property owner? Do I call the town? Right? At that point in time, if it's the property owners who are maintaining this pump, then how's, you know, do I call, is it an insurance issue? Is it their issue to take care of? Right? I can say that, you know, being there for a couple of weeks, you know, we've enjoyed all the trees. Also, in a new development where they pull down all the trees, you know, that does create all kinds of issues, let alone like wildlife issues who live in those trees, but also any type of landsliding, any type of ground shifting. You know, where we lived in South Carolina, they pulled down all the trees. There were no trees. And you could see the, you know, ground shifting as it rained every, every single year. I'm like, you know, my house is going to be at the bottom of the hill in five years, right? Because it just kept on eroding all the, I'm thinking that, you know, without any type of vegetation, you know, it's going to shift and it's going to change. And no matter what you put in there, if there's going to be no vegetation, whatever may be a solution today, may not be that solution 10 years from now because of the change. Right? And then my third, I guess, point I wanted to bring up is the whole, you know, well, we're going to build one thing and see how it goes and build another thing and see how that goes. You know, again, I'm not saying anything negative. They could be the greatest builders in the city of Rochester. I wouldn't know. But I'm kind of concerned that, you know, the noise and the dirt and the, you know, everything that goes with construction for one house, and you think it's done, and then they start building that second house. And of course, you know, you're, you build all three houses, there's going to be construction for, you know, however long it takes, six months, eight months, right? But if you start building one house, let's see how it goes, and give it a couple of months, and then you build a second house, give it a couple of months, before you know it, it's two or three years of solid construction. And, you know, I work from home. My kids, you know, they like to, we're enjoying this huge backyard that we just moved into, you know. I mean, I would be pretty upset if, you know, for the next two or three years, I had to listen to people building houses and construction and bulldozing and whatever else happens in the backyard. And, you know, that would just be a unfortunate disturbance, I guess, as a new, brand-new homeowner. So that's all I got to say.
Okay. Thank you, and welcome back to town.
Yeah, thanks.
Okay, does anybody else want to speak to this application or this sketch plan? Let me just check the computer here to see if there's any call.
Is the sketch plan available online?
Yes, on the website. If you go to, Doug, do you want to mention how to get there?
On the website, Penfield.org, I think it'll be under the carrot, it's going to the right, is properties under review. We'll have a link to this application, which will have a copy of the sub-plot. You're also welcome. We have copies of the plans upstairs if you come to Penfield Down Hall during business hours if you happen to go through.
So I'd like to say something for the audience that, in the first place, this is not an application, this plan has not been submitted for approval. So it's, it's just informal dialogue. Secondly, the town has laws in place that prohibit the conveyance of stormwater from one property to an adjacent property. So very much appreciate, we all live in the town, most, if you've, if you've lived here long enough, you've experienced some, some standing water at some time on your property. And the, the owner's engineer is simply gathering information here so that they can gauge how the community feels about it and how the board feels about it. And, and then should they decide that they want to proceed with a formal application, then they will put a finite plan. This board would never accept a plan that might have two lots or might have three lots. So just want everybody to know that. In order for that, that, that application to actually move forward towards any kind of a review process, they would have to submit plans that show precisely what they intend to do and how they intend to do it and how it conforms with the town code. So I hope that eases your mind a little bit.
Okay. Any other comments from the board?
No.
Thank you very much for your presentation. And we can move on to application number two.
All right, application number two, McMahon LaRue Associates, PC 822 Holt Road, Webster, New York, 14580. On behalf of Brent Rothfuss, request under Chapter 250, Article 11-11.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision approval for the proposed three-lot subdivision with no new construction on 60.67 acres located at 1911 and 1977 Salt Road, Fairport, New York, 14550. The properties are now or formerly owned by Brent, Terry Floyd, Floyd P. Roth, and Floyd P. Rothfuss, and Charles and Constance Horst, and Zoned Rural Agricultural, RA2, application number 22P-0018, SBL numbers 125.04-1-8.11, and 125.04-1-8.2.
Good evening. Al LaRue, McMahon LaRue Associates, Tom Blank, the attorney for the owner is here. The owner couldn't be here. He's out of town. Brent Rothfuss says, just briefly, this is a, just a simple subdivision. There's no construction anticipated with this. The entire farm, the Rothfuss Farm, is 57.72 acres. We're looking to create a, a lot around the homestead of 5.867 acres, and just contains the homestead. Lot three, there's a uncle, and we're looking to add 2.213 acres to that parcel, that existing parcel, making that a total of 7.316 acres, thereby leaving lot one, which is the remaining, at 49.64 acres. We have received comments from PRC and Monroe County Planning, and there isn't anything in there that we haven't addressed. These plans are, are, are plans that are, been set up for filing as a county clerk's office. So they, they correspond to all the, the requirements. With that, there's not much I can offer.
Okay. Terry?
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions. Let's see here, variances, there's buildings on the, on these lots already, or at least one?
Lot two is the homestead, and there's buildings on that. That was the original farm. Well away from, the new property lines are well away from it.
So we don't foresee any, with these lot changes, any of the footprints with the buildings or anything like that needing any variances?
No variances, no. We're.
That is something staff is discussing internally.
To the road than current, right?
Yes.
So it's pre-existing, non-conforming essentially?
It's pre-existing, non-conforming. Staff is currently discussing internally whether that would need to go to the zoning board for pre-existing, non-conforming.
Just to get it on the record.
Get it on the record and would memorialize it for the future.
Okay. I didn't mean to interrupt you.
No, thanks. No, appreciate it. As long as they know that, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm good then, you know?
Bob?
Yeah.
Anything?
I'm good.
No questions for?
No question.
Okay. Anybody in the audience would like to comment on this application? Let's see if anybody has called in from Hong Kong or Paris or something that's watching. Nope. Strange. Okay.
Did we have any, excuse me, did we have any other prints with the, the buildings on it that were submitted to us, Al?
No, no, we haven't submitted, we didn't put the buildings on it, didn't think it warranted because we were so far away from, from all of that, from the property lines and that, that parcel is going to be almost six acres. So.
Okay.
Yep.
All right. Thank you.
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item three.
All right, item three, Lobella Associates, 300 State Street, Suite 201, Rochester, New York, 14614. On behalf of Rochester Gas and Electric Corporation, request under Chapter 250, Article 12, 11-11.2, Article 12-12.2, and Article 13-13.2 of the Code of the Town of Penfield for preliminary and final subdivision site plan and conditional use permit approval for the proposed relocation and modernization of an electrical substation with associated site improvements on 2.43 acres located at 2070 Empire Boulevard. The properties now are formerly owned by JJ and A Development LLC and Zoned Limited Business LB. Application number 22P-0019, SBL number 93.02-1-1.121.
Welcome.
Thank you. My name is Mary Stubline. I am from Lobella Associates here, representing Rochester Gas and Electric. With me I have Chris Kuiper, who is the Argene Unit Manager, Lines MV Unit One. And in the audience I have Eric Thorne and Megan Yoshida, who are also with Argene. They are environmental and permitting managers for substations. So Argene proposes a new substation, electrical substation 55, for increased reliability and additional capacity to the Penfield and Webster areas. This new substation would also support upgrades to transmission and distribution lines in the area. The existing substation 55 is on the west side of Empire Boulevard, about 450 feet away from the proposed location of the rebuild. Unfortunately, that existing location can't support redevelopment to accommodate these upgrades that are necessary while also remaining operational and thereby providing continuous service for customers in the area. So.
Can I stop you there for a sec?
Sure.
So is that normally what you try to do when you upgrade? You try to keep it operational and have room on the existing site to kind of?
Yeah, ideally.
Get the new infrastructure in before you take it offline?
Yeah, ideally, we'd have enough room on the site that's existing to perform an upgrade like this. But if, as you could see by the, well, it was up there, we're kind of landlocked, and it's such a small site, actually completing a construction right there wasn't feasible. So we looked for this lot.
I didn't mean to throw you off your game. I just had to.
I have to say, I really, I appreciate your commentary because it's, it's very entertaining.
It's very, I didn't catch you, what you said, it's very what?
Entertaining. The one-liners are keeping me going tonight, so thank you.
We also understand that this type of development is probably not something that you see very often, so please, you know, feel free to ask questions throughout.
Absolutely.
So speaking to that, to that point about the, trying to build a new substation, or trying to rebuild at the existing location, it's also desirable to stay as close geographically as possible to the existing substation so that it doesn't cost additional money to the ratepayers to relocate all of the connections between the various lines of the substation.
Wait a minute, we got to pay for this?
Yeah.
Span the building. Make it three stories.
The height requirement is out.
So the proposed Station 55 rebuild would include a few components that I just wanted to go through so you understand the basics. There will be new switchgear equipment inside a Parkline pre-engineered metal building. There will be two transformers that will be installed at the north end of the site. Those will have oil containment foundations. There will be various electrical infrastructure such as vaults, manholes, conduit trenches. And then the surface of the substation yard is a, is a stone surface, and that's enclosed. Oh, we have the rendering up now, so you can, can see some of these components. That's the control house to the, to the left of the picture, along the west side of the site. The transformers would be in the back of this view. So the, the yard is stone, there's security fencing that's proposed around the perimeter of the site. There would be new lighting that is provided as well, three types of, of lighting. We did not provide a photometric yet, but that will be provided. There would be wall packs on the building. There are perimeter lights that provide security lighting. Those are on from dusk until dawn. They are full cutoff.
You're talking in addition to the wall packs or?
Yes, in addition to, so there's three distinct types of lights. The wall packs that would be attached to the building, the perimeter lighting.
Full cutoff also.
Full cutoff, yep. The perimeter lighting, which you can see some of the taller poles there.
Okay, that's the perimeter.
The perimeter lighting, which is also referred to as security lighting. That's what's on only from dusk till dawn, also full cutoff.
Houseside shields?
I'm sorry?
Houseside shields for shielding glare from the neighbors?
I will have to check on that. There's a, there's a standard light fixture that Argene uses, but if there are particular requirements, then we can look into that. And then generally, task lighting is installed, which is not, not on unless there is like an emergency repair that is necessary at night and they need additional lighting. So that's not, not on regularly. The substations are unmanned, so there's no parking requirements. If somebody needs to come and maintain the site, they can park within the substation fence area. There's no trash removal necessary because no one is occupying the site. There's no sanitary sewer laterals or water services required because there are no facilities within the property. So this development is in the limited business district. We are abutting a multiple residential district. We're here requesting site plan, subdivision, and conditional use permit. What's driving this application when we don't have maybe all of the design details worked out is the desire to subdivide this 0.532 acre parcel from the, from the larger parcel that will remain at the north. We are aware that we would have to go through the EPod permitting process and obtain a floodplain permit. There is a portion of floodplains at the north end of the site, so we understand the potential need for compensatory storage to be provided. We also know that we will have several area variances, so we have applied to the ZBA for that. The variances would include lot coverage, setbacks, fencing height and the fence setback and the buffer between the limited business and a, and a residential district. This is kind of an unusual use for the property, so it doesn't lend itself well to maybe the normal zoning considerations. Due to the proximity to the border with Webster, the application had been referred to the county. County planning comments came back, they weren't terribly significant, I think. They're not things that we weren't. They're not things that we weren't already aware of and we can address. We also have received the town's PRC comments. We know that there are many outstanding items that need to be addressed. For instance, I'll highlight a few of them. I don't know that we need to go through all of the comments here. We understand water quality concerns. We definitely have more than the 6,000 square feet of new impervious area at the site because it's pretty much all of the half acre will be developed. In reaction to the fencing comments that were provided, we have, we plan to revise the application in that we showed a chain link fence with a barbed wire outrigger, which is the type of security fence that Argene uses as standard. Instead, as you see in the rendering, we're suggesting replacing that with a Maristar security fence, so it's a more of a decorative fence. It would still be black metal, and it would still meet the security requirements, but look a little nicer than chain link and barbed wire. We understand that sidewalk would need to be installed in order to meet the town's requirements, even though we don't have sidewalk connecting on either side of this. There was a comment about noise. There is a noise study that's in process. Sometimes there is a concern, as you can see from the background of this rendering, those two transformers have been located at the north end of the site, which is as far away as we can get them from neighboring residential developments.
I can comment a little bit on the noise.
Okay.
So they're low dB transformers. I believe it's less than 40 dB at three meters. So you won't have the same type of typical noise that you could hear from an open air substation. This is all underground, so there should be next to no noise, similar to what you would hear in a library at three meters.
Okay.
And then the only other item I wanted to comment on again was the floodplain. We know that that is a comment that appeared in the PRC comments and that we will consider moving forward in additional design. So that is my summary. Look forward to your questions.
Okay. Kelly, you want to start off?
Yes, I do. Thank you for your presentation. So my first question has to do with, I understand, you know, when AJ had talked about moving, when you're putting in a new location, you can't utilize the old location, but what happens to all those old locations? Or do they just sit there vacant? I mean...
Right, so I, good question. That location, you know, the substation will be removed.
Okay.
It's not needed anymore. What we can do with that property is still being discussed. I don't have a plan for it yet.
Okay.
If you have any suggestions, you may be able to hear them.
Okay.
If that helps.
Yes, it does, just as long as it's not vacant.
No. It doesn't have to...
Building sitting there, doing nothing.
Nope. Building can go away, transformer goes away. In fact, that transformer will be used at another substation.
Gotcha, gotcha. Okay. And then the other has to do with vegetation around the fencing area. I know that the comments about the fencing that you guys have addressed, putting a different fence up to make it look a little bit nicer. I notice there's four trees in that drawing. Is there going to be more than that, just to make it...
So it was intended, and the plans reflect more arborvitae in that section that we're looking at. There's also arborvitae in the two other kind of lawn areas proposed. We are limited in where we could put vegetation. We do not want vegetation inside of the substation yard. It is important to keep that substation yard with a stone surface. It helps reduce step potential and danger for people who need to access the substation yard. But certainly, we want to provide screening, and we think that the arborvitae, in combination with that decorative fence, is moving in the right direction.
Yeah, so the yard is stone, so it's not paved or anything?
Correct.
How do you deal with snow removal and everything?
So snow removal at most of these stations doesn't need to occur unless we need to access it.
Okay.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
I want to give you the opportunity to answer your questions, but I do have a question about that.
Go ahead.
So how often typically will there be somebody on site?
I don't know how to quantify few and far between, but not much. I mean, they're self...
Typical on average, twice a month?
Maybe.
Once every quarter?
I'd be willing to say maybe a couple times a month, maybe. It really depends on whether they're switching.
For 20 minutes or for two days?
No, it wouldn't be for any kind of long maintenance, right? It's a brand-new substation. The reason we would have to go in there would be for switching operations if we're going to be doing some work somewhere else. But there shouldn't be much need to do much work there for any significant reason. I mean, we don't really have anyone across the street either. You know, it's, it shouldn't be any different than it is now.
Okay. I want to, are you all set?
You can go ahead.
Okay. I mean, you can go.
No, no.
All right.
I insist.
Let's talk about the lights.
Sure.
Because today's world, almost every commercial fixture has 0 to 10 volt dimming capability. And in my view, you'd have to make a very good case to have those lights on, at least on full, unless somebody's there. Because there's sensors available, there's all sorts of things that can be done...
Sure.
...to minimize the impact at night.
Understood, understood. So Mary, do you have any suggestions for that right now? I can tell you why we have the lights. It's for theft, you know, safety of the public. People do break in. Granted, this is a little bit more populated of an area and is probably less risky, but it is not uncommon.
Right, you don't want kids to go in and break in and wander around or others.
You know, it's a safe sub, but one of the issues that we find is people trying to steal copper, right? It's a, there's copper in the substation, and they know where to find it.
Do you have security systems on these substations?
The control house will have...
Not that I should ask that in public, but...
The answer's yes.
Especially with people around the world.
Yeah, the answer's yes. I mean, we have security at our subs. But they still find a way, and we need to make sure that...
So you could, I mean, honestly, there's, the technology's not very expensive, that you actually could have sensors there that the lights would start flashing if an unauthorized person broached the site.
Okay.
There's all sorts of cool stuff that can, without a big expense, not like it was 10 years ago.
Right, no, I understand. Definitely sympathetic to the public over there. I mean, that's one of the reasons we put the fence, you know, upgraded the fence here. It's all underground.
Okay.
We understand.
Another question is on the building. Is there a way that we can make the building look pretty? I'm told that there's a substation on Plank Road near Five Mile Line Road or some facility that is like this, that I drive by there all the time and would never know that it is because it looks like a, I'm going to say a regular building, you know, but I guess regular building is a, means different things to different people. Looks more residential or fitting to the area.
I would have to look into that. Yeah.
I mean, there are, I've seen these applications of like a brick veneer, that kind of thing that we could consider.
I mean, I think the...
I think that's, is that brought up right now?
Bushes in the way, but it looks like a house, pretty much.
There's, I know there's a couple of those in existence. I'll have to look into it.
Okay.
I think the building we proposed is, you know, it's our, one of our standard Parkline buildings, but you know, the intent is to be prettier than the old gray substation control house. And it's standard for a reason. Everything we do here, we're trying to do with the best interest of our ratepayer.
Sure.
If we put in custom buildings everywhere, that's, we're trying not to do that.
Okay. Duly noted. But we're special in Penfield.
I fully agree.
Don't you all agree? Okay. I don't have any other questions at the moment. Who wants to go next?
So, any energy storage systems in the building?
There will be batteries in the building, yes.
Lithium-ion?
I believe so.
Okay. So lithium-ion batteries ignite. Not only do they ignite, but often after those fires are put out, they reignite because of fugitive energy in the buildings and the heat that they create. I'm sure you know this, but I'm speaking for the audience.
Yeah.
So this speaks to the snow removal. You mentioned earlier you didn't believe snow removal was important because the building is unoccupied, but there's certainly the potential for a fire in the building, so emergency responders would need to go there.
Yep.
There's the potential for somebody who's there delivering parts or maintaining the facility who falls ill or gets injured, and emergency responders will have to go there. So, you know, the facility has to be plowed to an extent. So if you want to delineate on the plan what areas will be maintained so that emergency response vehicles and personnel can get into the gate and near the entrance or near the transformers in the back and reserve the other areas for snow storage or just natural melting, you know, that might be more appropriate. That's all I had.
Okay. Yeah, we do have, and it can be provided, standard fire protection within the facility because, you know, we understand the hazards of the batteries. There's hydrogen sensors in there to make sure that if there's, the batteries are having a problem, we know about it. So I understand your concerns, and I want to look into something else on that before I comment further.
Do you have the same types of batteries in use in other substations?
Yeah, they're necessary...
How long have you been using them and how often do they catch fire? What's been the experience over time?
I'm unaware of any fires anywhere. You know, they're in use in every substation because in the event of a power outage somewhere, you know, let's, when we lose house service power maybe, those batteries are online to maintain protections throughout our grid so that they maintain our communications with our equipment, and they're generally, you know, they're designed to run for, I want to say, eight hours.
Okay. Okay.
Yeah, I had a few questions, and yeah, to Jim's point, I'd be interested in, too, any fire suppression systems associated with the batteries.
Yeah, I will look into that.
Okay. Will there be any, on the, on that lot, will there be any storage of any kind?
No.
Okay. And it sounds like all of your conductors are underground. You have a single fence, but even if someone happened to get past that single fence, there's no live conductors?
Yeah, no, this is, this station is completely underground. Our risers will occur on the property to the north that we're subdividing to the existing overhead circuit that's over there. The intent was to proceed underground on 227 Empire and then west towards Empire Boulevard because we will look to get to access circuits across the street.
Okay, thank you.
You bet.
Good, thank you.
The current plan to get across Empire Boulevard would be NHDD off of 2070 Boulevard, or Empire Boulevard, which is essentially a trench underground over to, I think, Kendall. I think that's Kendall right there.
Okay. Okay, I have, I'd like to open up for audience input, and I have two folks that have signed up, and I'd be willing to bet they're related to each other. We will go with ladies before gentlemen. Kristi Vitale, is it Vitale or Vitale?
Yeah.
Okay. Come on up. And was I right? Are you related? Are you sitting together?
We've been related for over 50 years.
Okay. So my hunch was correct.
Yes. Yeah, good evening. I, I'm just appalled at this proposition. It's right across the street from an apartment complex, Daniels Creek. It's right next to a ranch house that's owned by an excavating company. We're the third house down. I have a clear shot at this piece of property. And when I turn off Empire Boulevard, I have to look at Empire Bar and Grill, the cigar place, the hair salon, then the body shop, then the excavating company. Then I come around that curve, and it's like I'm in the country. And that piece of property is like a green space. It's important to the neighborhood. People walk their dogs there. I'd like to show you this picture. I don't know if you can see it, but it's a fawn that I found there three weeks ago. And the mother had hid it there out in this field. I've seen fox there. I've rescued turtles there. There's a big drainage ditch. It's really not on Empire Boulevard at all. There's a big drainage ditch that runs along from Empire behind that piece of property that then goes into a creek that is at the end of the property. So it's kind of surrounded on two sides by water, so you're going to put an electric facility underground. It concerns me greatly. It will change the tenor of the neighborhood. It'll just take a chunk of nature that is important to all the kids that live in that apartment complex and all the people that live around there, the houses down the street. And that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. The other Vitale.
Right, I'm the other hand of the team. Jim Vitale, 81 Seabury Boulevard. And just a couple of comments and questions that I have, and Kristi did, you know, mention one of them. That's the Wukolik Pastoral setting that's there right now. I think they showed a picture of what it looks like now. It's a pasture. It's kept mode, and it's very nice. It's pleasant. And it's really, it's part of a residential area. Now presently, the substation is across the street. I've been over, I looked at it, I know what it is. And it's in more of an, I'll call it industrial-commercial area because you've got the Hertz parking lot on one side, and you've got Howard Hanna on the other side. And it's been there since, I'm going to guess around 2000, 2002, something like that. And now, my understanding is Argene, from their application, wants to have a different location so they can upgrade services. They, and it would make it easier to upgrade the services. So we're looking at ease. We're not looking at necessity. The location presently can be upgraded, and my understanding it is it can be upgraded, but the service would have to be disrupted or channeled in a different direction to make that happen. So what we're looking at is basically sacrificing a green space and making it into an industrial space in a residential area that when you come in, it's a nice setting that you see. And now we're going to change that and see a different kind of fence than what initially, you know, it's not going to be a chain link fence with barbed wire on it, but it changes it. And the argument is that... it. And the argument is that, well, we're going to camouflage that with arborvitae. I'm not sure how high the arborvitae is going to be, if it's going to be six feet tall immediately, or if it's going to start at two-foot lengths and then grow over a period of 20 years. You know, it's, we moved there in 2016, and part of the reason for moving there is because of when you enter the area, it's a pleasant setting. And behind our house is Empire Park, which, you know, we have ponds. It's a nice, pleasant, green area. In relocating to this part, they're going to have to have four variances, which means that ordinances are not going to be met. When I did two things to my home, I had to meet the Penfield ordinance. I put a deck on. I had to meet the guidelines. I wanted to put a tool shed in, a green shed. I wanted it to be six feet wide, but it would have been six inches too wide, and I had to have it redone to five feet to make sure it fit properly. I had to follow the ordinance. I didn't ask for a waiver. I followed the rules. But what I'm understanding is that they're going to ask for variances, a couple of which are pretty, I think, severe, which is going to change the nature of that area. So as a homeowner, and I think you're well aware of this, we all got reassessed this year. And my assessment did not go down, it went up. And if you put a substation into the neighborhood, my guess is the value of some homes are not going to be as great as they would be if there was not a substation there. There is an impact. Now, Seabury, and that's the pastoral scene I was referring to. That's all going to change. It's not going to be there. So when you come in, that's what you see. Instead, you're going to see fencing and a building that's there because it would make it easier for RG&E to do their business. I think it still can be done based upon where they are. Or if there's another space just down the road between Nutcracker and Ron's Auto Shop, there's a big vacant field. Now granted, I don't know who owns it. I don't know what the requirements are there. I'm just saying, it's on the same side of the street. It's still an area that is undeveloped. And right now, of course, you do have the urgent care that's going in right behind the substation now. And I think that's all one parcel of property that's owned. But I do have some concerns. And granted, you know, most people say, okay, RG&E wants to do it. Probably a done deal. That's fine. They'll do it because they are who they are. But as a small, little homeowner that has a pleasant little ranch house, I am concerned with changing the nature of a residential area into more of an industrial area. And it just changes the complexion of that neighborhood just to make it easier for RG&E to upgrade. Doesn't mean that they can't upgrade where they are, I don't think, but it would make it easier. So we're looking at ease affecting the environment as opposed to standing up and saying, wait a second, let's look at an alternative, which maybe has been discussed already. I don't know. I mean, I got the postcard in the mail. I'm just responding to it. But it does cause me some real concerns. And there are kids that go, that play over there from the neighborhood. And I know some of those kids, and a lot of people do walk their dogs, and hopefully they pick up their litter. But it is a nice, open, green area that now will change into a chained-off area with a large parking lot, which won't be used regularly, with a metal building. It's a concern to us. And most people just let it slide and say, it's a done deal, let it go. But I just felt, we felt that we had to just speak up and express our concerns because I just don't think it's, it's the direction that Penfield should be going in, an opinion. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Appreciate your comments and sticking around. Okay, can you, do you mind going over the variances that are required?
Don't mind. Just give me a minute to...
I'm guessing lot coverage, probably less green space than?
Yes. So what we have applied for, a variance of 23.8% from the maximum lot coverage, where you're allowed 65%, we're at 88.8. Setbacks, a variance of 65.3 feet in the front, a variance of 3.8 feet on this side, and a variance of 14.9 feet on the rear setback. Fencing variance of six feet for the fence height within 20 feet of any front property line, and variance of three feet in fence height from the maximum of six feet in height. Now, the fence in particular is regulated by the National Electric Safety Code, so it has to be a certain height in order to meet substation safety standards. And then the final variance is for a buffer along a boundary line between the limited business district and a residential zoning district.
Okay. And you've already applied to the zoning board?
We have.
For that. You go before them, is it next week?
Next week, yep.
Okay. Okay. Considered other parcels?
What was that?
Have you considered other parcels?
Right. So when we originally looked at the, ideally, we'd build where we are. There wasn't enough room to install a transformer feasibly. So when we originally, we did originally try to acquire the parcel that the urgent care is on currently. Again, the reason is we're trying to locate next to the existing electric infrastructure. If we were going to move up the road, it would add millions to the cost of the project. That's really the problem. We're trying to do what's right for our ratepayer because those kind of moves are very expensive.
And is it, is it impossible to utilize this existing lot? What would be required to use the existing parcel and upgrade there?
I would have to evaluate that more. I don't, I just, we did try to evaluate that. The building, we need to install a new breaker. The building that's there, you know, the facilities that are there won't house the breaker. We have to add a transformer. You know, there's one on the lot already. You could see it with the overhead photo. There are underground facilities that would, you know, we would have to contend with all the underground facilities that I just don't think is feasible from a constructability standpoint in an energized substation. What we're trying to do is remove contingency issues for loss of the substation. It would create, we're trying to make the facility more resilient, if that makes sense.
Okay. All right.
I have one more question.
Yeah, absolutely.
So the substation that you showed off of Plank Road, the one that didn't look like a substation?
Mm-hmm.
There was no drastic fencing around that. So the need for this fencing?
So the fencing, there's no, you don't see a transformer there or any outdoor facilities, I believe?
Okay. Is that the, I'm just asking, what's the difference?
Yeah, it's a custom indoor substation is what's over there.
And you couldn't do anything like that?
Everything can be done at a cost.
Yeah.
I think that's, I think that's where we're at. We chose this lot and tried to utilize, you know, upgrade the fencing, provide plantings that are going to provide some screening. And we are sympathetic to the fact that we're trying to put something here. Every time we try to build something somewhere, it's the same scenario. Just the area's built up, and we need to upgrade. It's really why, so we really are trying to put our best foot forward. And I, yeah, I don't know if I can, I can't commit to a different building at this point.
Nothing.
Good. Jim?
So since residents of the town have brought these things up, would you be receptive to giving the board some kind of a brief report that explains to the residents of this town why you couldn't expand your existing substation?
Yeah, I think that's a very reasonable request.
Okay, I do too. And appreciate that if there's a lot of underground infrastructure that it would have to be relocated and possibly taken offline while you're making some other improvements. These are the kinds of things that I think the board would like to hear and the residents would
Sure.
are entitled to understand. You mentioned going further down the road and that it would add millions of dollars. So now we're hearing, so we've got this existing facility, and it might be physically impracticable
Right.
to expand at that location. Then you've got the, down the road and perhaps a less invasive location that would add millions. Then you've got this proposal here where you're showing us a fairly utilitarian, pre-engineered metal building with metal siding panels and a metal roof.
Yep.
So I think another thing that might be helpful is to show, provide the board with some kind of a
Estimate.
a study as to why RG&E couldn't make this proposed facility blend in with the residential neighborhood.
Mm-hmm.
And not just by putting brick on the building. I mean, there's more to it than that. Somebody here mentioned about our arborvitae's and, you know, and we get this all the time. So you have this very nice sketch-up rendering that shows this, you know, lush, mature landscaping. And it looks very nice, but, you know, certainly it wouldn't look like that tomorrow. So, but you certainly could plant mature trees, or you could put green wall on the fence so that it looks like real-life vegetation. You know, there are things that could be done.
Okay.
I think, you know, maybe given the proximity to the residential neighborhood and, you know, the view of the public, that maybe, maybe that would be warranted.
Yeah, understood. And I will look at the, you know, the custom building that we're looking at here. I think they do get large quickly. You know, there's
Sure.
When you're trying to put two transformers inside one of those would be, it would be a large building. And I think that
You know, you mentioned these are low-decibel transformers, and that's fine. But, you know, we get this all the time with the applications. You might have been here to hear the Verizon application. Every time there's a cell tower, there's a transformer. And there are ways to shield the transformers.
Correct.
So, you know, you can certainly make them look like attractive little sheds or something.
Yeah, we could, we could do like a split-face CMU in front of the transformers. That's something we've done and we can do.
Yep.
Yep. Let us take a look at it, see if there's something feasible.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
Nope.
Somebody from the audience, and nobody has called in. So, all right. Thank you very much for your presentation. Thank everybody for coming, and have a great weekend. We'll call this hearing closed. Okay. Finish up quick on tabling or
Okay. You want to start with the last one first?
Sure.
Start with RG&E?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Like to ask for what Jim asked for and what the residents, the Vitales, asked for. I mean, I'm guessing that's another example of a substation?
250.
Okay. You'd never even know it's there.
Yeah, there's another one in Pittsburgh, just, I guess, just south of Stone Road.
So, yeah.
So there's a few of them around.
That's much more palatable than a giant metal building.
You know, yes, and if it was in a more industrial, commercial location.
It's an arguable point that it's right next to, but it is, I agree that that's, hey, I live down this road and
It's a part and parcel of this residential community.
Yeah. It's, it's, it's your neighborhood. So if they could do something like that, I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, make the building look better. And even if the transformers have to be out in the yard, do something with some, you know, split-faced brick bordering. It would still have to be
You know, we've, we've seen some dumpster enclosures that look like beautiful little garden sheds. I mean,
Oh, yeah.
There are ways of doing that. But it's interesting to me that this gentleman was, was of the understanding that the expansion of the existing substation was doable.
Right.
I wonder where he got that information. If he made an inquiry at RG&E or
Right.
You know, that's the buzz around the neighborhood or
Mike?
And the gentleman from RG&E didn't
Didn't say it was.
necessarily discount that.
Right. Right. Because, and he kept, and his whole point was that it was easier for them to move to a different location, to that location across the street.
Mm-hmm.
Baytown, in Baytown.
And I was thinking too, okay, they expand, and they have those two transformers. Is part of the plan, is there like a possible future expansion? Or on that site, they may want to even
Put four?
Have more. I don't know.
You would think that, that would be in a plan, that you, if you're going to move it, you move it to a place where you can have future expansion. Because if the existing one was put in 20 years ago, you know, we're looking at 20 years from now, do they need to upgrade it again?
But they already need area variances. So maybe they can reconfigure the switchgear and create a future indoor transformer. I mean, we put transformers in buildings all the time.
Yeah.
Right.
So
And they could also be put in a vault.
They can also be put in a vault. Yep.
Right. Okay.
Going to zoning, don't forget next week though.
Yeah.
AJ, you're going there.
The whole arborvitae thing, I think that's going to need town board approval because it's in the right-of-way.
Yeah, and you know,
Sidewalk policy.
You know what happens to arborvitae's. The minute the piles come through and they take the salts, they're dead.
Right.
Or at least the bottom two feet.
Well, because they've left no space on their property to put plantings. They gotta, they're asking to put them in the right-of-way, which
I think they'd be better off with a commercial green wall. We put these all along the Metro North Railroad up in New York, adjacent to residential developments. And this green wall looks like it's, you know, it looks like English ivy that's grown naturally, but it's a commercial mechanically fastened product. And if it got damaged, they could replace it.
Look at Catherine go. Wow.
That's nice.
She's almost like Alexa or something.
Maybe we should start calling her Alexa.
Yeah, we call her Alexa. What's the weather today, Alexa? Okay, any, anything else before we table this one?
Did he, did they say if they, okay, so they couldn't look for the other locations because it would add millions of dollars onto the cost for going?
He didn't really answer your question whether or not they entered And we asked the applicant, have you considered leasing or purchasing, you know, existing buildings?
Right.
So, you know, I think they should answer that question. I think that's a valid question.
And then the other thing is to the current location, they didn't specify what their plans are?
No, but he did say he would provide a study.
Okay, okay.
Okay, you want to table?
Next week.
So just table...
Asking the questions that we brought up. We'll pose all those questions in a tabling resolution.
Okay, so motion to table the application until all the questions have been...
Asking the questions.
Yes, until the questions have been...
Do you have a second?
I'll second.
Who was it? Kenauer?
Yes.
Kenauer?
Kenauer.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
All right, moving backwards, we're going to Salt Road.
Salt Road.
Can we, is there a strong reason why we can't just have our boilerplate subdivision approval on this?
No, but I think we should strongly suggest that they put the buildings on the plan because the one bill, or one lot could potentially require variances for bringing in compliance, basically.
Do you want to, you want to wait for that?
Yeah, you think we should table it and then ask them?
It would be helpful not to throw shade at the county, but I know there's been a mapping error with 1977 in the past.
So Mike, you're thinking that the, that the resub would be a code-triggering event for the non-conforming front setback?
Mm-hmm. But that's what Doug and Andy have been discussing as far as do they, do we need to bring them into the zoning board?
Okay, so I think that, that, in, in...
Right.
In and of itself.
Yes, we're discussing whether they need to come in for pre...
Justifies tabling it until we get that worked out, for sure.
Be to treat it as a pre-existing non-conforming and have them come in, get a variance for their pre-existing non-conforming, and bring it into compliance if they do anything, if he looks to do anything else with the property in the future.
Right.
It's covered with...
Well, unless they touch those boundaries, then...
Unless they touch those boundaries and make them...
I mean, generally, it's a no-brainer, but...
Yeah.
Okay.
Right, so we've got to work out the details, so we're tabling based on finding out those details.
Do we want to also include the septic system approximate boundaries to be sure they don't cross any lines?
That's not a bad idea.
Yes. A good thought.
Terry?
Okay. Yours. Make the motion to table it based on those issues.
I'll second.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
Okay. Sketch. Wow. So I'm assuming the state, I mean, they just...
Yeah, they don't need to have any approvals.
Bring all their stuff onto that property?
So, I quickly looked at that, and I probably got to look at it again. It's pretty much like designed as an infiltration basin, so the only reason for the eight-inch is for like the emergency overflow type of scenario.
On the state property.
On the state property. So it's not like every time it rains, it's pouring water out of that pond onto this parcel. So it's, you know, it has to at least fill up how many rainstorm events to come out. So, but we've told the applicant that this has been known as a wet parcel, you know, and it's been like that for 30 years or whatever, so, you know, it's, we've gotten complaints from all the residents around there about how wet their yards are and stuff like that. So staff does have a concern on how he's going to handle and mitigate. And we've asked, they came in at PRC, and we've asked them to, you know, come up with a plan to maybe better contain it, or, you know, at least draw some of the water off of the back properties that surround it...
There you go.
And contain it on there. Now pumping the scenario is, yeah, I'm sure you could just do a glorified, you know, sump pump type of thing, but where do you do it? I don't know. Watson Road is probably the only way where there is storm sewer.
Yeah, there's no...
Otherwise, you have to go up, you know, to Penfield Road and then down to the east more, so, because there's a wetland by Blake Miller's property.
They'd have to determine how much capacity...
Oh, right.
There is, and how much they could dump all at once, you know.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
You know, the thing is, when we've had lift stations before, there has to be an alarm system, there has to be a high-water alarm, there has to be some kind of a generator or battery backup system, so it's fail-safe.
Right.
There has to be a maintenance agreement in place.
Right.
I'm thinking if, if you can convince them to provide some drainage structures along that boundary, put an easement in there and alleviate the drainage problems or partly alleviate the drainage problems from those existing properties.
Right.
They'll, they'll have friends for life, and they'll solve all the problems and...
Well, that's what we sort of...
And then lot three is not so much of an issue. Otherwise, you know, how do we approve a third lot that we know is going to be a problem?
It's going to be a problem. Let alone a fourth lot. I don't think, I don't think a fourth lot...
And Steph has discussed this with them several, I mean, I believe they came into PRC either three or four times, even prior, I believe prior to the purchase of the parcel, had sat down with us to discuss ideas for how to develop the property. So it's, it's something that they should have been aware of from the start, was that there's drainage issues on the property. I do know they attempted to pursue the state through legal channels for drainage mitigation, and I don't believe they were successful in getting the state.
Yeah, they can't sue this, they don't have standing. So what is it that they're, is this a family that they want to build three houses for three members of the family, is that?
I'm not entirely sure, I know...
They said only two, and I asked them.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I know they have come before us, Steph before, with several ideas of varying densities of residential...
Maybe they're looking to sell the third lot to offset the cost of development.
Potentially.
But if they're going to do that, I would think, in my opinion, I would prefer them change the lots to provide maybe like a private drive off of Penfield Road, and then, you know, all three lots come off of Penfield Road rather than the Watson Road aspect.
There's the potential, we advise them of the potential of using 278 to accomplish something like that where they could cluster...
Right.
Lots where even if they were generally compliant with our code, would be able to ask for reduced setbacks as part of that clustering, and then whether the access to Watson was restricted against further development or, you know, doing some other improvement as, as part of the benefit for the 278.
They'd still have the issue of feeding the utilities off of Penfield Road rather than feeding the utilities for the flag lot off of Watson.
Yeah, which I think is probably...
Well, I think all of the utilities are for the most part on, I know sanitary sewers on the south side of Penfield Road.
Right.
Waters on the north, but I think waters on the north and the west of, west of Watson.
That's an awful long way for a sanitary lateral, too. They might need a forced main to get back to Penfield Road there.
Yeah, but I think it's more direct coming all off of Penfield Road than Watson in the first place.
At this point...
But that's, let them figure that out.
He's heard, he's gotten your comments, he's heard the board's concerns, he's heard the lot of neighbors' concerns.
Yeah.
So, I mean, if they, if they decide to file an application, they got a lot of work to do.
Yes, they do. Okay, so let's start a draft sketch letter.
Okay.
And then we can review it and vote on sending it probably next time.
Okay. It works, we can do that.
So I would say I will move to begin drafting a sketch letter echoing our concerns.
Okay.
And then we'll review it and send it after the...
I'll second.
If you have a second, oh, you got a second, you seconded, good.
Hetske?
Hetske, aye.
Aiken?
Aiken, aye.
Burton?
Burton, aye.
Kenauer?
Kenauer, aye.
Tiding?
Tiding's aye.
Okay, anything else?
That is all I had for you guys tonight.
All right. Thank you, everybody. Good work. And we will adjourn.